City Council meeting, our regular meeting in Clear Lake City Council. Held here at the Clear Lake City Hall Council Chambers at fourteen oh five oh Olympic Drive in Clear Lake. I'd like to call the meeting to order at six P M on November sixth twenty twenty five. To begin, Madam Clerk, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Hooton.
Here.
Councilmember Downey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Slotin.
Here.
And Mayor Kramer.
Here.
And Councilmember Wilson is absent.
Okay. Um, alrighty. Thank you. I'd like to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Vice Mayor Slotin, would you please leave it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, I'd like for you to remain standing. I, I don't see Pastor Brown or was Pastor Pavoni was going to be here, but I do not see him. So what we'll do is I'd like to have a moment of silence. We've lost two more longtime uh, members of our community. Janice Cooper asked several weeks ago, she was a one-time teacher at Canucka Unified School District. And uh, the wife of Dr. Mark Cooper, in Dennison area. And our second person is a a old timer in Lower Lake where I grew up. Glenn Corky Schmidt, he's lived there all his life on a ranch right outside of town, has been very involved with the Lower Lake Community Action Group over the years. I'd like to just observe a moment of silence in their memory, if I may. Okay, maybe seated. All right, to go over the meeting procedures. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to introduce written material into the record at the public meeting on any item are requested to provide a copy of the written material to the Administrative Services Director, City Clerk, sitting right over here, prior to the meeting date, so that the material may be distributed to the City Council prior to the meeting. Speakers must restrict comments to the item as it appears on the agenda and stay within a three-minute time limit. The mayor has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item. Council cannot answer questions or provide comment while a citizen is giving their public comment. Once your comments are complete, the mayor written may, me, may refer you to staff for follow-up. If you are on the Zoom meeting, please note that only written comments will be taken via Zoom during the Q and A chat feature. Please enter your comment on the Q and A chat. All right, our first item will be adoption of the agenda. City Manager floor, are there any modifications?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda in a second?
I move to adopt the, we adopt the agenda as presented.
I second.
Motion has been made by Vice Mayor Slotin and seconded by City, by Councilmember Downey. Please vote on your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we'll now move on to presentations. The first presentation will be by North Coast Opportunities, the Community Emergency Response Team. Is there someone here? Alrighty. Then we will right, move right along to your presentation of certificates of appreciation to their trunk or treat supporters and volunteers. I don't believe there's anybody here, so I'm gonna, gonna do is, is read off all of those that made contributions to this year's trunk or treat, which made it a great success. It was, there was a lot of goods there and a lot of candy. Okay, the first one would be, well, the City Council and City Staff, Cecil's Pizza donated thirty large pepperoni and cheese pizzas. Clear Lake Rotary Club made a monetary donation. Lower Lake Community Action Group made a monetary contribution. Clear Lake Chamber of Commerce made a monetary contribution. Foods, et cetera, I think gave us a lot of candy, if I'm not mistaken. H D Escavating Monetary, I believe, Joyce, Highland Senior Center, you were there, you were, you had had, yeah, nachos, I had several of the helpings of those. I can give you yours, but I'll, and then Burrell's Auto. So we thank all of those, all of those folks and, and companies for their contribution to make this year's trunk or treat event a huge success. We now will move on to public comment. This is the time for any member of the public to address the City Council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. Council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note, the comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. So if your comments will be limited to three minutes per person, council cannot answer questions or provide comment while a citizen uh, is giving their public comment. Once your comments are complete, the mayor may refer to you to staff for follow-up. Okay, I have here two written requests for public comment. First one, Patty Duke. You come up and of course introduce yourself. Even though we all know who you are.
My name's Patty Duke. I live at forty-nine fifty Spruce Avenue in Clear Lake. And my topic is ongoing harassment. Uh, I was poisoned in March by stuff that was put in my water bottles in my carport. And my Lorix security camera has been hacked, so the entrance to that carport and entrance out was blacked out, but I do have the video of that. And the ongoing defoliant spraying of my rose bushes to kill them and my other bushes and my dog's actually drinking some of that in rainwater. And holes in my trees where stuff has been injected and peeling bark and it's not, it's not beetles, okay? And so the latest insanity, and these are known people, three households of known people. And of course, now it's stalking at night and doing things where you can't get video or picture and they know that. So I got CCTV, so that got hacked. Okay, I was told that can't be hacked, it got hacked. And so I had to call actually the people maker of the camera as suggested by A D T CCTV to learn how to reset it because my password didn't work because it'd been hacked, okay? Things on the camera that I didn't put to happen, happen. Um, anyway, so that's ongoing as well as the defoliant. And then I swept my, and it sounds silly, but I swept my road, the upgrade on, that goes down to my private road of pebbles and rocks so that the trash truck and whatnot doesn't dig into the asphalt because I upkeep my road, okay? And so that was at two o'clock. And then when I came home around seven o'clock, of course, it was dark. And just as I started going down the downgrade, this went into my tire. And it's been, it's been, it's got a little thing that makes it pointed. So my road was clear when I left at two. And I don't think my front tire was any different than my back tire, but as I started to go down my road, I heard my tire go pop. And when I parked, it was about twenty minutes, it went flat. So that's a hundred ninety-one dollars for a new tire. From the hatefulness, there's three houses of hatefulness. Why? Because I have a legal right to my private road and I have a legal right to my private property. And people that have grown up there, raised their kids there, whatnot, feel that they have every right to be on my property, on my road, and I have no right. And I've got attorney letters, I have a survey, everything that you need to verify what belongs to you. And even the guy that put in the CCTV could see the camera being manipulated as he was setting them up. His last re, his last remark was, you should move. That was the CCTV technician. So I got back into my CCTV.
That's time, Mr. Mayor.
He can't delete pictures off of that, but he can manipulate.
Thank you. We'll refer you to Lieutenant Peterson later on. All right. Uh, second request, Joyce.
Good evening, Council. I see Joyce Overton, City of Clear Lake. Um, I just wanted to kind of make public that I am going to be doing the Thanksgiving dinner on Thanksgiving Day again. Um, especially with the way our community is being hit. Just to let you know that we're up to about a hundred and fifteen seniors that are coming into our building for lunch now, you know, up from seventy. So quite a few more people and I anticipate it's going to get even more. So it's going to be a rough month. So we decided, I've been, I've been doing it for like twenty-five years now, was trying to figure out when I started it. It was a long time ago, so um, I didn't do it last year, but my family kind of said, why? Because we've got so used to doing it. So this year we've decided to do it with the with what's going on. We've decided to do it and we will be doing Christmas dinner on Christmas Day. So I just wanted to kind of make that public and invite anybody that would like to donate to help out our community or come down and volunteer on that day. I know it's a holiday, but it's a good way to give back to your community and you get to see all the people that really are in need. So um, and also, thank you, the trunk or treat. I just wanted to say that I didn't have that on my carpet. Um, truck or treat was fabulous. I think Charlotte did a great job for her first time. Uh, really had it together. I was very impressed with how she handles things here. So really happy to see her at the youth center. So I think that's going to be a really good asset for us. So thank you. You guys have a good night.
Thank you, Joyce. Uh, is there anyone else in the audience that has a public comment?
Hi, how is everybody? Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. Um, all I was wondering, and I know you guys can't answer, but I was reading the consent agenda and I'm wondering maybe if you can elaborate after I ask. On the Eighteenth Avenue project, and I know I didn't get to the project update meeting, but I was really curious as to what's going on with that whole project. It seems like things are getting canceled. Um, maybe you can elaborate on that. And then also on the termination of winter storm um, emergency. I'm just wondering what that means. So maybe someone could explain that as well. All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Garcia.
Well, it would technically most appropriate to um, address those issues under the consent calendar items.
Okay. Did you hear that, Mrs. Garcia?
Stephanie Hummel, Clear Lake, California, and um, I just have to complain to somebody. Um. Y'all, the insurance for senior citizens on Medicare isn't good. And it's going to be worse next year. And I just feel that I don't know, I don't know where else to turn to for help, but um, I don't, I don't have, um, I don't know, like mine's going to only go up fifty bucks. I'm not, I shouldn't be crying over fifty bucks. That's not what I'm crying over. You know, it's just, uh, the only option for Clear Lake is united. I, I don't have anything against anything, but um, you know, I'm in a lot of pain with my body and everyone's saying surgery, but if I have to pay twenty percent, there's no way I can have any kind of surgery. So um, and right now with Aetna, and they're going to be leaving. Um, I can't even officially, this hospital is out of network and so is Sutter. So for me to go do blood work or X-rays, which I had to do, I had to go to Napa. So I just, you know, I just really wish you guys would do something. We just, I just, we need help. There's a lot of seniors here. And uh, you know, I look at people that have jobs. I haven't worked because I hurt myself. And uh, people that have jobs have insurance and so we need it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Is there anyone else in the audience? Please come up, ma'am.
I'm Winnetka Kirkwood. I'm coming back about Unity Day. So Tara asked me to bring, I guess, evidence that we existed, so. Um, I have a whole bag of stuff.
I didn't, take it over there, please.
Yeah, that's just like articles, commendations from the city, often wired. You know, I think it out.
Well, we, we, we don't have time right now to do that, perhaps after. Ma'am, if you could get, come back over there.
You see, I'm not used to all this, but um, I, I wrote even um, a, a resolution, I forwarded it to Mary Wilson, and I hope that you will help support us with Unity Day. We need unity more than anything. And it's been extremely successful. Our main thing that we're asking for is the Senior Center on, on January nineteenth with no cost because we have no budget. And um, if you could help us with advertisement, but I have a partner that couldn't make it tonight, but she does pay for all the advertisement. You've been there, so you can vouch for me. I am real. So please think about it. Normally I like to have everything done by Halloween, but I know you didn't meet last, you know? So I hope that um, how would I find out that you're going to do it?
Well, I would recommend if you want to set an appointment with me, then I can work with you on it.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Do you have a card?
I don't have one on me right now, but.
All right. I will, I will call you then.
You just ask for the city manager, they'll find me.
All right. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Charlene Witham, and I just wanted you guys to know that Mark Scott this last weekend gave out three hundred bags of dog and cat food to the community.
That's great.
Yep, and everybody was real nice and, thank you.
Thank you so much for doing that. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak? Anyone on Zoom, Madam Clerk?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor. However, we have received an emailed comment.
Okay, could you read that, please?
The emailed comment comes from Barbara Christwitz, and the subject is her idea to bolster the City of Clear Lake's noise ordinance. The context of my idea is that there have been times in the past when a neighborhood party has clearly been too loud. Particularly, I'm writing about music that is amplified with powerful speakers. This situation is a disturbing of the peace problem. And when I have called the police, the police have gone to the source of the music slash noise and told the partiers to make it so the neighborhood is not forced to hear their music and party noise. Thank you, Clear Lake Police Department, for your prompt attention to such parties. The police come, tell the partiers to turn it down and then leave. Then not long later, perhaps ten minutes after, after the police encounter, the loud music resumes as before and often long into the night. Amend the noise ordinance law to say that, one, first visit by the police, the party gets a warning. Two, second visit by the police at the same place, the same day or night, the party gets a citation fine of two hundred dollars. Third, third visit by the police at the same place, the same day or night, the party gets a citation fine of five hundred dollars. Fourth visit, one thousand dollar citation. Fifth visit, wipe out people's bank accounts. Just kidding. I, I promise that wasn't, that was in the letter. And that concludes her statement.
Is, is that all?
Yes.
That's the extent of it. Well, Barbara hasn't told back. Okay. Uh, no other comments here. We now will move on to the consent agenda. All this, all items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council requests otherwise or a staff has requested a change in or adoption of the agenda. In which case the item will be removed for separate consideration. Any item so removed will be taken up following the motion to approve the consent agenda. Anyone want to remove?
I have a question on item eleven.
All right. So we will move item eleven to immediately after the consent agenda has, is there any other changes anyone wants? Okay, so I'd like a motion then to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item eleven, that will be discussed immediately after.
I move to approve the consent agenda. Besides item eleven, to bring to the council for discussion.
All right, I'll second, I'll second that. Item has been, uh, motion has been made to accept the consent agenda with exception of item eleven and held out by Councilmember Downey and seconded by Vice Mayor Slotin. I vote in your portals.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we will now move on to the business items, starting with item eleven. Pardon me? Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what we're going to do right now. But thank you for reminding. Uh, item eleven is acceptance of proposals for city facilities building maintenance. Are you going to, who's going to do that presentation?
Well, I'm not sure what Vice Mayor Slotin's question is. I mean, these are just some um, normal maintenance contracts that we periodically put out to bid or on-call services. And um, so we would just like to accept all the proposals and use them as necessary, but I don't know what, what specific question there was.
I, I have two questions. One of them is, do we give any preference to people within the city or county? When they look at our proposal like this? And secondly, if they look at the locations of those companies, they're all uh, out of town and some of them are even in Southern California, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense if you want uh, on an emergency basis, having help.
Well, there's not preference in our purchasing ordinance for that. We, we put it out through our portal and this is what we get. I mean, it's, it's a consistent problem with a lot of local contractors and a lot of industries to participate in a variety of things, for sure. Um, I, I don't know if Ms. Swanson wants to add anything, but.
Our current contractor for um, electrical is Echo, A C C O. And they, while they have headquarters out of the county, they do have local contractors that we work with, and they also submitted bids for HVAC. And that is also the same case. While they are headquartered outside of the county, they also work with local contractors.
So local contractors are part of this proposal? Or it didn't, do they have to be listed as subcontractors on a contract?
Um, they don't have, they, they're like, um, they have employees that are local, not like in county, but not, definitely not Southern California.
Okay. If you get here on an emergency.
Yes, they have in the past.
Okay. Hey, those are my only two questions. Thank you. Okay, do you want to make a motion on that, or is there any other questions by council? Any comments from the public? Bringing it back.
I moved if we approve item number eleven of the consent agenda as a separate item to be voted on.
I'll second it.
Motion's made by Vice Mayor Slotin and seconded by Councilmember Hooton. I guess it's a voice vote. Pardon me?
I think we need a voice vote.
Yeah, we don't have it on the thing.
That one would be a voice vote, yes.
All right, could we please? Um, shall I do, I'll do that then, if that's, or do you want to?
You can do that, Mr. Mayor. All in favor is fine.
All right, uh, Councilmember Downey? Yes?
Yes.
That's a member who?
Uh, yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion passes. Now, moving on to the business items. First item is twelve, discussion and consideration of draft climate adaptation plan. Do you?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I'd like to introduce Shannon Walker Smith, who's the Deputy uh, Community Development Director for the county, and the county's been taking the lead on developing this plan and uh, she'll give a introduction to, to the council.
Thank you, welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having me, uh, Mayor Kramer and council members. Um, I do have a member of our consultant team who's on Zoom um, who's going to give part of the presentation, so I'm not sure um, if we can make her a panelist or how we do that. And I also have a PowerPoint which she could share from her screen if we get her on screen, or I have it on um, this flash drive. Is there a preference on the presentation? To share?
She'll be able to do it there.
She'll be able to share? Okay, great.
I'll get to hear the whole thing this tonight.
Yeah, right. So again, thank you for having me. I'm Shannon Walker Smith, Deputy Community Development Administrator uh, for the County of Lake, and hopefully this is not your first time hearing about this incredibly large project that the county is working on, which is the general plan update, an update to um, all eight local area plans. And then in addition to that, we have been working on this climate adaptation plan, which is part of the project, but on a slightly different um, time schedule due to some special funding that we have for this project in particular. And it also allowed us to include both cities in the plan, and we've been working um, in collaboration with both cities um, and their staff to, to look at these uh, strategies to address climate hazards. So um, Jacqueline is here tonight from our Placeworks team, who is the consultant on this Lake County twenty fifty project, which includes the climate adaptation plan. And she's going to give a presentation about kind of where we are with the plan, um, the, the pillars that it's based on, the, the data that it's based on, and um, and we have a, a short opportunity for the council to give input. And, um, and we have a, a short opportunity for the council to give input before the public draft. So the public draft is coming and, um, we'll be bringing it back to your council for adoption in January. Um, but this is kind of a status update and then also an opportunity for a little bit of discussion about, um, items that maybe you guys would like to contribute before, um, it, it's in public draft form. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jaclyn and she's gonna, uh, give a brief presentation.
Thank you, Shannon. And before I start, um, can, can everyone see my presentation?
We can't hear you, Jaclyn. Want to try, try again, Jaclyn, to speak?
Are you able to hear me now?
I heard her a little bit.
That's our echo.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Not sure what, what that was, but I'm glad, and you're, you're able to see the presentation as well.
We can.
Great, I will go ahead and get started. So thank you, Shannon, and good evening, uh, council members. Uh, this is the agenda for the presentation. Uh, we'll start with an introduction, uh, to the project team, provide an overview of the adaptation plan, uh, summarize the process and the results of the climate vulnerability analysis, go over the pillars of landscape resilience, provide an overview of the contents of the cap and then go over the next steps in the process. So the, this project, as Shannon was saying, is being led by county staff through the Community Development Department and the Office of Climate Resiliency and in partnership with the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport and the Lake County Resource Conservation District. Uh, my name is Jaclyn Prosser-Ror with Placeworks. I'm the project manager on the consultant team and I'm joined by Tammy Seal this evening, who is principal in charge on our consulting team as well. So to start off with a bit of background on the project, uh, this effort began with the establishment of the Community Risk Reduction Authority in 2018. Oops. And, uh, the formation of the Lake County Office of Climate Resiliency in 2022. The Community Risk Reduction Authority in coordination with the Office of Climate Resiliency then adopted the Pillars of Landscape Resilience in 2023. And then later that same year, the city of Clear Lake, in partnership with the County Resource Conservation District and the city of Clear Lake, were awarded the California Adaptation Planning Grant for the Equitable Climate Safe Project, Lake Project. In 2024, the project team began developing the climate vulnerability analysis, the countywide evacuation study and the climate adaptation plan concurrent with the Lake County 2050 general plan update. So now for an overview of the adaptation plan. So the goal of the climate adaptation plan is to develop a roadmap for building climate resilience across Lake County, including the city of Clear Lake. In the context of this plan, adaptation means making changes in response to current or future conditions, usually to reduce harm and take advantage of new opportunities. And then resilience means the ability of communities to withstand, recover and learn from past disasters to strengthen future response and recovery efforts. So this process identified the most vulnerable communities, natural systems and built assets throughout, through the climate vulnerability analysis. And then the strategies and actions in the adaptation plan itself will integrate with the existing pillars of landscape resilience to create a cohesive approach for resilience across all sectors. The climate adaptation plan will provide practical and feasible solutions to reduce climate risks, considering existing resources, gaps and capacity constraints with clear pathways for implementation. This plan is being developed based on the four-step process outlined in the California Adaptation Planning Guide. During the first phase of the project, the project team initiated the process by defining the scope of the climate vulnerability analysis. Phase two was focused on assessing vulnerability or the degree to which populations and community assets will be affected by climate change hazards with the climate change, with the climate vulnerability analysis as the main product of this phase. And then we're currently in phase three of the process, which focuses on defining adaptation, the adaptation framework, which are the pillars of landscape resilience and then developing strategies and actions for each of those pillars. The next phase, phase four, will focus on implementation, where funding will be secured for programs and, and actions listed in the plan. Implementation will be monitored and the plan may be adjusted over time to account for capacity needs of the community. So the cap is intended to be a living document that supports other plans and programs and therefore integrates with several other plans to do so. The Clear Lake General Plan can use the climate vulnerability analysis to inform long-term climate resilience policies and programs. The adaptation plan can use the Community Wildfire Protection Plan to coordinate wildfire fuel reduction projects and evacuation route protections. The multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan can act as an implementation tool with the adaptation plan's long-term climate-focused strategies and the hazard mitigation plan's near-term hazard reduction projects updated about every five years. Capital improvement pr- plans can also act as, as an implementation tool with the climate vulnerability analysis and strategies informing infrastructure planning projects for resilience. The drought resilience plan supports over 80 small water systems throughout Lake County and the adaptation plan can provide a broad framework for implementing drought preparedness strategies. And then finally, the Blue Ribbon Committee for the rehabilitation of Clear Lake provides recommendations for restoring Clear Lake, which can be incorporated into the adaptation plan to support the economy, ecosystems and heritage of the area. So the next component, uh, the, the first, uh, study of the plan is the climate vulnerability analysis. So to start off with, what, what is a vulnerability analysis? According to the California Adaptation Planning Guide, the prime, which is the primary guidance document on these types of analyses across the state, a vulnerability analysis is an assessment of how a changing climate may harm a community and which elements are most vulnerable to its effects. So the project team used this four-step process for evaluating vulnerabilities. Step one, identifying exposure to hazards. Step two, analyzing the sensitivity of populations and community assets and the potential impacts of those hazards. Step four, evaluating adaptive capacity, which is the ability of populations or community assets to prepare for, respond to and recover from hazards using existing resources. And then step four is assessing vulnerability where all of the previous steps are brought together to assess and prioritize, uh, the vulnerability. So we evaluated how 91 different population groups and community assets across the unincorporated Lake County as well as the cities of Lakeport and Clear Lake were vulnerable to eight different climate change hazards. So these included agriculture and forestry pests and diseases, drought, extreme temperatures, flooding, human health hazards, landslides and debris flows, severe weather and wildfire and smoke. Here are the key findings from that analysis. So wildfire and smoke create the most vulnerabilities across all sectors. The most vulnerable populations are people of color and immigrant communities, financially constrained households, those with chronic illnesses or disabilities, older adults, people with high outdoor exposure such as unhoused persons or outdoor workers and persons in tribal communities. And then the most vulnerable community assets were found to be energy and communication infrastructure and services, homes, especially older and manufactured homes, transportation infrastructure, including both state highways and local roads, agriculture as an economic driver and then outdoor recreation and tourism as economic drivers as well. So city and county staff contributed to and reviewed the climate vulnerability analysis at each step in the process and that the report of the vulnerability analysis is now available on the, the Lake County 2050 website. And we did receive some feedback from the community related to the vulnerability analysis and these are a few quotes from one of the open-ended questions, asking the community members of their ideas for resilience. So we heard the importance of rehabilitating Clear Lake, undergrounding electrical lines and regular control burns and the use of cattle and livestock grazing to limit fuel for wildfires. For populations, we heard making local homeownership a priority and ensuring all voices are heard and considered in this process. And then for, for project-specific ideas, we heard finishing the Middle Creek floodplain and wetland reconnection and then creating microgrids at water plants, shelters and emergency operation centers. And then more recently, uh, over the past couple of months, the project team has facilitated several stakeholder discussions, hosted a Community Risk Reduction Authority Town Call and held city and county staff coordination meetings to put, to get their input on the successes, gaps and potential adaptation solutions for the plan itself. So the project team took the results of the vulnerability analysis and integrated them with the pillars of landscape resilience, which I'll now go over. So adopted in 2023, the pillars of landscape resilience framework, uh, is based on the Tahoe-Central Sierra Initiative and with feedback from local Lake County tribal members, the images for the pillars were adapted to better reflect Lake County. This framework recognizes the interdependence of ecological and social systems and provides metrics for measuring progress towards ecosystem and community resilience. There are 10 pillars total representing desired landscape outcomes. These include air quality, biodiversity conservation, carbon sequestration, economic diversity, fire-adapted communities, fire dynamics, forest resilience, social and cultural well-being, water security and wetland integrity. And each of the, these components are being incorporated into the adaptation plan, which I'll now go over. So the plan itself covers, again, the unincorporated areas, but also the cities of Clear Lake and Lakeport and will be organized by the pillars of landscape resilience and will have a long-term planning horizon similar to that of a general plan. The plan will contain background sections summarizing with climate vulnerability analysis and also local knowledge and lived experiences from the community, uh, engagement process that has been held across cities and counties. The resilient strategies and actions will be based on the pillars of landscape resilience, identifying feasible solutions that provide multiple benefits. And the project team also recognizes the great work that's already happening across the cities and county and therefore will highlight existing partnerships and programs wherever possible. The resilient strategies are organized by goals, strategy and action. The goals are broad outcomes or end states describing desired future conditions. The strategies are policies, programs and approaches to achieving the goal and the actions are implementation steps for each strategy. And each action contains more detailed information for implementation, such as responsible and supporting agencies, implementation timeframe, general cost estimates and potential funding sources. So the adaptation plan will contain one goal per pillar, so 10 goals in total and will include the following. For air quality, advancing community resilience to poor air quality events. Biodiversity conservation. The county's network of native species and ecological communities is healthy, abundant and distributed. Carbon sequestration, enhance carbon sequestration capacity across forest, ag and working lands and wetlands. Economic diversity, a sustainable and resilient natural resource-based economy. Fire-adapted communities, fire-prepared and resilient communities with capacity to manage desired future, or desired fire. For fire dynamics, fires burn in an ecologically beneficial and socially acceptable way. Forest resilience, resilient forest ecosystems that pro- right, sorry, provide essential ecosystem services. Uh, social and cultural well-being, a community connected with nature to recreate, maintain and improve overall health. Water security, reliable, safe and equitable access to clean potable water. And finally, wetland integrity, uh, protected and restored wetland and riparian ecosystems provide essential ecosystem services. So this slide shows example strategy concepts for four of the different pillars, uh, four out of the 10 pillars. So under biodiversity conservation, we have strengthening habitat connectivity and inter-agency coordination, uh, implementing the invasive species management program, uh, protecting and restoring aquatic habitat. For water security, we have water quality monitoring, water supply infrastructure and emergency coordination, uh, drought resilience for the most vulnerable community members. And then for social and cultural well-being, concepts include integrating public health information into emergency planning and outreach, expanding res- uh, access to resilience resources and resilience hubs and strengthening tribal co-management of natural resources. And then under economic diversity, policy concepts would include supporting climate resilience, resilient ag practices, fostering a, a healthy and sustainable tourism and recreation economy and ensuring equitable hazard preparedness access for small businesses. And as far as next steps, this shows the overall adaptation plan development timeline. As mentioned previously, the project began in 2023 with outreach associated with the Lake County General Plan Update occurring in 2023 and 2024. The climate vulnerability analysis was completed earlier this year and again is now available on the Lake County 2050 website. We're currently in the plan development phase, conducting outreach and engagement activities and preparing the plan itself. And then once adopted, the implementation phase will begin, which will likely be this winter and beyond. And for next steps, uh, well, the, uh, the climate adaptation plan will be released uh, for the, a formal public review period, um, and is currently being reviewed by local tribes in the area. And then we also encourage you and community members to visit the project website, which has recently been updated, again, lakecounty2050.org. So we are hoping to get your input on the climate adaptation plan and have one discussion question for your council to consider. What are your biggest concerns related to implementing climate hazard mitigation, adaptation or resilient strategies in Clear Lake? And with that, I
Sorry, Jaclyn.
No worries.
Um, we can also take your questions about this presentation.
Yes.
I was saying, we could also take any questions that you have about the presentation or about the plan.
Is that presentation available online for us to really look at?
Jaclyn, do we have one of the presentations up on the site?
I don't believe it's been posted on the site. Um, it will be posted in the next couple of days, though.
Next couple of days and what's, what's the site again?
Lake County 2050.org.
Oh, okay, part of the 2050 plan. And Ted Marais. Uh, contact her.
Her or myself?
All right, um, I know with the 2050 plan on the lower lake side, they are not really satisfied with the, with the meetings they've been having so far.
For the local area, we're about to engage them again. We've been on a little bit of a hiatus um, as we're preparing the public draft of those plans and then we'll be engaging those local area plan committees, um, again for their input.
That, that would be good.
So again, I really like them.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure that you, we can provide the, the PowerPoint as well and get it out to the council.
That'd be great.
So if, once the plan gets adopted by the city and county, it happens.
Then we'll begin working on implementation, which is about partnerships and then fun, looking for funding for specific strategies.
Do you have anything particular that you want to start getting funding for?
I mean, there's a lot in the plan and, uh, I mean, there's a lot in the plan and um, so there the plan will outline uh, specific potential funding sources for each action. Uh, but the it's going to be up to the board and the and the councils to kind of prioritize um, what funding to go after and, you know, we're we're facilitators at that.
This is a plan you can focus on reference.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I know the question was, what kind of um concerns do we have about the implementation? And I don't have so much of concern about that, but I just um would like to see uh, maybe like more of a focus or a voice for the water quality of Clear Lake. I know the Blue Ribbon Committee was mentioned.
Yeah.
Um, and I know that um, a lot of, there's, there's a fair amount of people who get their water from the lake. So I think that having um the quality of the lake water itself be of a high priority would be great.
Thank you.
Um, I had a question and the last slide said something about engagement activities. What type of activity? Like, what does that entail?
Yeah, so for the overall Lake County two thousand and fifty project, but in addition, the climate adaptation plan, we've done like two rounds of significant community engagement. So we kind of kicked off the general plan and started engaging the community in a round of um, visits to the municipal advisory councils where we asked them a lot of questions about these plans and how to their input on moving forward. And then we've put out two surveys um, to the community and we got and some of those questions were directly related to climate vulnerability. And we've got um in the first survey about a thousand uh responses to that survey. And then a little bit less in each subsequent survey. And then we recently, specific to the climate adaptation plan, did a town hall with the RRA. Um, we did again a round of uh presentations to the municipal advisory councils and got feedback there. And then we've also done a number of stakeholder meetings, business, um. Uh, Jacqueline, help me out.
Uh, business, environmental, agricultural stakeholders, uh, recreation and tourism. And I I think I'm missing a a few. Oh, and uh, community-based organization organizations.
So we held a variety of stakeholder meetings, invited.
Can you get your bike?
Okay, we uh held a variety of these stakeholder meetings, invited people specific to these particular groups that we wanted input on. We've done that all over the last couple of months, specific to this plan.
I think one thing I just um have to add, because um, a lot of people in Clear Lake, they don't know their evacuation zones. And I'm wondering if that will also be included as far as like outreach, like knowing their zone and like in case of emergencies or evacuations of any sorts of like fires or natural disasters or whatnot, so.
There is some response, like emergency response goals and actions in this plan. In addition to that, for the county, we're, a lot of that will be embedded in the safety element for the general plan. And then the city would do a similar thing. And also, a lot of that stuff is in the um, what is now a multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan. That's a pretty substantial plan that talks a lot about emergency services.
I think mine was more just like a getting, like, how do people find out their evacuation zone, like the numbers and like the, you know, stuff like that. So um, I think that's probably for another time or another topic.
I think we are trying to like echo that through all of these plans. The the real goal is to align now because we're doing all of this work kind of all at one time. The hazard mitigation plan just got adopted, so there should be threads now through through general plans, hazard mitigation. And those plans Jacqueline discussed um on the slide, the goal is to kind of like have these threads that go through all of them and are all aligned.
Yeah, that's kind of have the same concern. Doing parts of the same thing and I need like the evacuation plan. I think there is part of it that I know or district has got, has got that in another document. And it's, you know, RRA's got, we've got documents, things scattered all over. And it seems like we're, I don't know, we're stepping on each other on this or not. Focused on now.
The outreach. So the outreach to the community. Okay, thank you for that. We'll make sure to highlight that.
Okay, well, it'd be great if we can again get this uh presentation.
I will email it to Mr. Flora tomorrow.
That sounds great. So are there any other questions from councils? Are there any comments? Um, Margaret, you had your hand up first.
Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. Um, one question I had was on the um, yeah, I've just lost my complete train of thought. The other them appeared. Um, as far as the surveys that you conduct, as reaching the public and getting public uh feedback, you called it. I'm wondering, how are those surveys conducted and how do the general public, how are they made aware of this? And then I've also, I'm wondering where you're at. Hmm. In other words, where did this project evolve from? Uh, you know, how this came to be and it does seem like there's a lot of other groups doing the same thing. I don't know. Um, I'm just curious about that.
I'd be happy to answer. So to start with your first question, the surveys. Um, we did quite a bit of community outreach around those surveys, including those visits to the municipal advisory councils where we announced the survey, provided a QR code. Um, we also presented at multiple other meetings and community groups, also talking about the survey. Um, we had AmeriCorps members at that time helping us with the project, actually the group that was going to be here tonight. Um, they did some work for us during that time and they went out to food banks um, and a variety of other community groups and um actually had the survey on iPads and on paper. We were at the fair, um, the Blackberry Festival and some other community um events. And um, so that was all the outreach we did on on the surveys. And then uh, where this plan started is, well, this plan is coming as a state mandate. Um, we we got a little ahead of it because of this partnership with the uh Risk Reduction Authority and the Resource Conservation District in partnership with them and the cities, we applied for this grant specific. Um, and this is one of the parts of that grant was to fund the work on this plan. So it really, it came from um people in the community concerned about the way the climate is impacting our community now and has over the last, you know, uh, decade. And the desire to get out ahead of the state and start addressing some of these climate vulnerabilities.
Again, the site that has some of that information on it is what for?
Yeah, lakecountytwo thousand and fifty dot org. There's a lot of information on that site about this project and, you know, the project in general.
Did you get that? No, we've, we've, we've got Margaret. I'll come back to you. Patty.
Patty Duke, Clear Lake. So a lot of our citizens, I'm sure, do not have internet access or know how to access this site. And we don't have a lot of people at our meeting. And I'm sure you have other meetings, but how many people are there? And so will there be a public citizen mailing of the evacuation plan, the zones? Uh, what's being done about the water quality? I believe this is the only way the majority of our citizens will actually be able to see what you're doing, rather than just the internet. Okay, because there's a lot of people that are internet illiterate.
And just to clarify, of course, this meeting is also broadcast and available on PEC TV. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I know that um, this has come up a lot in community feedback that um, non-internet sources of this information are going to be a priority. Thank you for your question.
All right, Margaret, go ahead. One question.
Boy, you sure do kind of try to. Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake, um, I just was wondering, um, as far you threw me off again. I'm completely losing my train of thought.
I do that on purpose.
Yeah, 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 I know, I bet. Um, I'll sit back down and I'll remember exactly what I wanted to ask. Um. Oh, I know what it was. Um, uh, council, uh, woman, uh, Hooton, discussed the quality of the of the lake water quality. And the water quality, I think, is important because it does supply drinking water, but also it's, this is a big recreation area, fishing, the lake and the water quality has been a problem for a long time. So I'm hoping that maybe a lot of your concentrated efforts would be focused on water quality.
Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you for your comment. Any other comments, questions?
Council. Okay, well, thank you so much for
Thank you for having me.
Uh, coming and giving us that great presentation and we can all go on Lake County two thousand and fifty.
Lake County two thousand and fifty dot org.
For all of those with that ton of information.
Why two thousand and fifty?
The general plan that we're working on in this project is kind of part of this larger project. The general plan will go out to the year two thousand and fifty.
So it's like a thirty-year plan?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. I guess, I don't get the whole.
And the climate, uh, the climate adaptation plan has a, has a, a planning period of about the same. So this is also a long-range plan, the cap.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
All right, uh, provide direction to staff. I'm sorry, I should ask, is there anything on Zoom, Adam Clerk?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Now bring it back. Um, I guess you just want consensus to move forward.
Yeah, there's nothing. I mean, this is just one of those outreach efforts to try and get the word out about what's happening.
Well, I, I apparently you're working on it and Ted with Mark Robertson, part of staff is.
Yeah, mainly mainly Mark. I haven't been directly involved too much.
Okay. All righty, well, thank you. We'll move on now to uh, item thirteen. Discussion and consideration of award of contract for the Burns Valley Arrowhead Olympic Drive project. A manager, Flora?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council member. So um, the council received a uh letter from the Coy Nation related to this item today. I'm sure you've had a chance to read it. Um, so I wanted to kind of address a few things because I think there's a number of misrepresentation of the facts that were in that letter. So I I'm not going to go through all of them, but um, just to provide some clarity, there's no known Coy village in that area. Um, and further, this project will most definitely not disturb any archaeological remains, um, even if that village did exist in that location. Um, our project archaeologist um did not, so, you know, we had an archaeological report. Um, and it was quoted in that letter uh from his report, but if you actually read the report, um, that's not what he said. So um, in order to provide, um, you know, it's important not to crop his findings. Um, and so I'll just read for you quickly what he actually said. Subsurface excavation extending below the level of imported road base, for example, trenches and vaults to house underground utilities and drainage features may impact intact archaeological deposits, thus represent a significant adverse impact. Um, however, the plans that we had for the road um were never proposed to go below the road base. Um, and so we're not a concern. Um. So the important thing to understand about this project is it does not include any underground work. Um, it is a simple repaving project. It will not be any uh work below the road base, does not include trenches, vaults, culverts. We re- we removed all of those aspects of the project due to the inability to even move this project forward um because of the, honestly, the tribe's obstruction up to this point. Um, and another thing I want to point out that in fact, the Coy Nation filed a lawsuit against the city um, on our environmental review of this specific project, uh, which was dismissed by the judge for a complete lack of care. Um, and you could make a choice, which is essentially what they're asking, regardless of meeting the environmental standards, to still pay them for tribal monitoring on the project. In in my opinion, there's no basis for any expenditure of taxpayer funds for a project that has had final environmental documents completed um, in spite of their efforts to prevent it. Um, so again, the project is a simple repaving project of an existing roadway. All drainage elements have been removed from the scope of the project. So having said all of that, um, we are still waiting on a signature from the state um in order to essentially have authorization to award the contract. We thought we would have a, we had a meeting with him today. It's going to be either tomorrow or early next week when we get that signature. Um, and so um, we're going to ask the council not to take action on it tonight. We'll put it on the next agenda. Um, and uh, we will have the sign off by that time and then we'll be ready to put the project out to bid. Or uh, not put the project, it's already been out to bid, but to award the contract and move forward, whether permitted.
So you're asking us to table this till
Yeah.
next meeting.
But I would address any questions if you have any um related to the to other stuff we shared.
And council, uh, county or county, okay, no, there's no questions. Um. I guess, all right, public comments.
Exactly, uh, what part? Because I haven't seen the plan, so excuse me, uh, on Arrowhead, are you doing from Burns Valley up to the Arrowhead at the top? Or back the other way?
It's all of Olympic Drive.
This, this is, by the way, Joyce Overton, that is at the
Yes, Joyce Overton, city council, our city, city of Clear Lake, so sorry.
All of Olympic Drive, Burns Valley Road from Olympic Drive, um, all the way around and then um, all of Arrowhead that would beat up to the portion that we already did, right? To park.
Yeah, because you know, there is some drainage issues and I understand why you would want to remove those, but Arrowhead had some draining issues uh seriously between Pomo and up to the main red, so it's not covering that part.
Well, it's going to be paved, but if we were to actually fix the drainage, we would have lost the funding because of
Of the, of the tribe. Okay, so sorry about the tribe. So I I just wanted to be clear because I don't know if paving that is even worth it because with the drainage issue, the water just runs over it so badly that it's just going to eat it up. So yeah, I mean, if it's, I don't think you're going to make it any better. No offense, but I think it's kind of a waste of money on on that part right there. So, my opinion.
That's Mr. Duke.
Patty Duke, Clear Lake. So I have a client in on Tenth Street and I noticed uh trenching and kind of we ruined the road on Ninth Street that turns into Gulf. Um, is that part of this project?
No, it's not.
Okay, I just wondered. Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, is there any other comments? Bring it back to council.
Well, no, no action needed at this time.
Oh, right. We're just, we want to table a, table it down.
Rather than just pull it off the agenda, I wanted to give a little explanation. So we can move to the next.
We'll move to, I'll have a motion to table the
We don't need any motion. We just
Okay.
No, no action.
We shall, no action will be taken tonight. We'll table it till the next, next meeting or?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, now, moving on to public hearing on item number 14. Discussion and consideration of naming two new public streets. Mr. Flora?
Director Labor will present the staff report on this item.
Thank you. Tonight, the city council is being asked to consider adopting Resolution 2025-39, authorizing the creation of two new public streets. Little background on this, the purpose of this public hearing is to consider the creation of two new streets. These streets will provide access to the Burns Valley Sports Complex and the Public Works Corporation Yard. That is shown on the map that's on the staff report. All new street names must be approved by city council following a public hearing. The purpose of name, of the naming process is to ensure clarity for emergency response deliveries and navigation system. So the location of these two streets is the one coming off of Olympic Drive next to Mudslingers, leading towards the proposed sports complex that will go all the way to Burns Valley on the north side. And then the east-west road is Corporation Way, leading to this Corporation Yard to Burns Valley on the east side. So those are the two new roads and we have a lot of trouble getting deliveries and stuff going to the wrong places and it's now that we have the Burns Valley Development complete, we have two roads without a name. So during this process, Public Works and Engineering verified no duplication or conflict with existing names. Fire Department and police were notified with no indication of potential confusion for emergency response. This notice was published October 25th with no written objections or comments being received as a date of the staff report. Proposed street number one is Sandlot Drive. That will be the north-south road and proposed street number two is Corporation Way going in the east-west direction.
And that that'll be shown to the.
These two particular roads. Only the Sandlot portion from Olympic to Corporation Way has been paved at this time. The other Corporation leading east of Sandlot Drive and Sandlot north of Corporation Way will be closed off until the Burns Valley Sports Complex is completed.
Yeah. Thank you. Are there any questions from counsel?
I have a question. I'm curious, how did, did you come up with the names? It was a group effort. I like Sandlot, that's a, that's appropriate.
Yeah.
For it to be where the ballpark fields are.
Okay. Any comments from the public? Mr. Sabatia.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Bruno Sabate, City of Clear Lake. I'm going to go a little bit outside of your agenda item. I apologize. I'll be quick. Love the new names. You need some new names. I'm just wondering what you're going to do with Ballpark that will be left behind where there will no longer be a ballpark once this is all finished. And I hope that you're thinking about Valentine as a possible street name since he put in a lot of money and that ballpark was named after Mr. Dale Valentine and his wife. Apologize, I don't remember her name for all the donations that they provided to that ballpark in the first place. So just it's weird to have ballpark left behind when you're.
I could argue that Mario Lucchese gave the land for that ballpark.
Okay, well, I guess I'll stop the argument on something outside of the agenda. I just wanted to ask what your plan is for ballpark in the long run.
We, we don't have one yet. I don't think.
No, we don't have one yet, but we do, we have had discussions about still recognizing the Valentine support of the existing fields at the, the new sports complex as well.
All right, are there any other comments, Mrs. Garcia?
And Margaret Garcia City of Clear Lake, I just wanted to get some clarification. I'd asked a couple of questions earlier and you said that that's, at the time to bring those up is during the consent agenda. And as I understood it before, you can't really discuss consent agenda items during that time. So I'm not sure, maybe I was confused as to your answer on that.
We're, we're now out talking about the public hearing comment here.
I'll, I'll address her questions during my city manager report.
All right, did you hear that, sir, ma'am? He will address your question in the general man, or the city manager report following. Uh, sort of, no, are there any other public comments? Is there anything on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. So now I will. Are there any comments from the council for deliberation, for deliberation? On this during public hearing? Do you have any doubt? Okay. All right, I will now close the public hearing. And I, at this point, would be taking a motion, but I think you want to say something, Councilmember Downey? No?
Motion.
Okay. Go for it.
I move to, wait, to approve the creation, Resolution 2025-39, approving the creation and official naming of two new streets to be known as Sandlot Drive and Corporation Way.
Question is made by.
I'll second that.
By Councilmember Downey and now seconded by Vice Mayor Sloot. Please load in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, now we will move on to city manager and council member reports. City Manager Flora?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council members and Ms. Garcia. So the 18th Avenue construction project that was canceled by the council tonight. We have the project fully designed. It was put out to bid. The council awarded the construction contract. That project was halted via litigation from the Coin Nation. And ultimately, the Corps ordered us to cancel our permit approvals. And so that's why the construction contract was canceled. Related to the winter storm, so there was a storm in February of last year that caused a landslide and we declared a state of emergency in order to respond to that. We got ultimately federal funding or, well, we're still waiting on it to be paid to us, but the work was complete and once the work is actually complete to resolve the emergency, that's when it's appropriate for the council to rescind the state of emergency. Okay, so just a few items. Through Clear Lake Express, we put some information out on the rental registration program, which is live as of today. So staff's been putting a lot of effort into getting that going. We're focusing first on a priority list of about 150 properties. So there's a couple of known bad actors that we continually have problems with. So they're on the list, all their properties. And then we used a tool that we have to search for a number of things. And so there was a search done for suspected rentals that have at least one code enforcement case and one police report at that address in the last 24 months. And that's where we ended up with a list of 150 properties. So that's where we're going to start. And we'll work through those and then, you know, we'll, we'll continue from there. Mentioned before about our regional housing needs allocation that's passed on down from the state to us. So we're entering a new cycle where we're going to have to update our housing element and the state has gave proposed numbers. So it works through the Lake Area Planning Council. It's for the whole county. They gave us numbers that we thought were quite unrealistic. We filed an appeal. They rejected the appeal. They also rejected our proposed methodology for calculating how the three jurisdictions will split that allocation up. So we're still working on that. The, so we have a, a work group between the three agencies, agencies in Lake Area Planning Council. It's working on kind of a revised approach on how that's going to work. So more to come on that. The Clear Lake Park Road project that was done primarily last year was with some areas not complete because some water line work. The road paving was finished this week. So up there, Sonoma, around Pomo School and whatnot, looks quite a bit different. So there's still a little bit of cleanup work and some striping that will be done in front of Pomo School that will hopefully be finished over the next few weeks. Officer Sanchez, who is our newest K-9 officer, is down in Riverside County with Lieutenant Snyder right now picking out the new K-9 dog and then he'll be down there for six weeks of training with the dog. And then coming back with our new dog. And then we have another K-9 officer that has been selected that is trying to accommodate housing that will allow her housing the K-9 and then hopefully in January, she will be heading down to pick out her dog and going through the training as well.
Coming back for, they get to come back for Thanksgiving and Christmas or?
Initially, they'll be apprehension protection dogs with the possibility later of going back for additional training to do either narcotics or explosives. The last thing I was going to mention, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion around related to, you know, SNAP benefits and with federal shutdown. You know, as a community here in Lake County and in particular in Clear Lake that has a higher reliance on those benefits, obviously a concern. I did see today, you know, there's been a number of iterations of this, but today a federal judge did order that 100% of those benefits be given. And I, while we're sitting here in the meeting, I got a press release from the governor's office saying some people are receiving the benefits already. So hopefully that's happening fairly soon. The county board supervisors did create an ad hoc committee, kind of focused on some of this. They did invite the two city managers to participate. They're trying to figure out how to put some funding into this, but then, of course, there's various community groups that are working on ways that they can help as well. The Rotary Club's been doing some stuff. Foods, etc., has a program they're working on and I got, had a number of communications today from local restaurateur who's hoping to do 250 free meals for the community next week and an additional 250 the following week, either at the community center, probably because of the painting project, it will be at the youth center. But anyway, a lot of, a lot of stuff going on.
The second one will be, the second one will be in Lower Lake, I found out. Just interjecting.
Okay, I don't know if we're even talking about the same person, Mr. Kramer, but anyway.
The numbers are the same. Thank you. A manager, Flora? Uh, Councilmember Hooton?
Um, so we attended the League of Cities Conference in Long Beach and one thing that I wanted to bring back was that we made contact with the U.S. Department of Agriculture about the oak trees in the Moab beetles that have been found in them. We had the trees marked for removal and since we made contact with them, we've asked that we put a hold on that. They said they'd send somebody out to give us a second opinion and see if there's other options to try to save those trees that are on the beach by the dragon. So I wanted to share that.
Thank you. I'm ready. Councilmember Downey?
Um, on October, when was it? It's been so long, I feel like, 19th. It was on a Sunday. Jamison Rescue, along with Clear Lake Animal Association, they put on a vaccine clinic, a free vaccine clinic and food distribution at the senior center. It was a great turnout. We ended up vaccinating over 203 animals, that's including dogs and cats, and over 129 microchips. And out of those vaccines, there's 168 rabies vaccines that were given, so they all got well checked by veterinarians. And vaccines were given. I was there volunteering and then our mayor was also there hanging out and cuddling some animals. But it was a great turnout. We're really appreciative to the senior center for allowing us to, allowing the rescues to have this event and having this for our community. It was huge for the animals, being able to get, you know, health checked and the vaccines at a zero cost and also getting food, crates, blankets, collars, leashes. So it was a great turnout. There's a lot of people. The sun was out, very blessed that it wasn't raining. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Councilmember Downey. I will have an answer to that. It's my turn. Vice Mayor Sloot?
Let me see, I had some, on Wednesday, I forget what, I'm sorry. On Wednesday, in collaboration with Knottai School District Rotary Club and IGA, we filled up 200 bags of food and the city manager was part of that group. It went actually really fast. I was very surprised. Also Wednesday, I, I attended the Yuba College Foundation Board Meeting and really there's not much to report to about. And today I went to the Redwood Region Economic Summit. Some very interesting speakers were there. And there was always a lot to learn about those kind of conferences. That's my report.
Thank you. Just, with regard to yours, I think it was the same thing. I was contacted by Mr. Biassadi this afternoon, asking for a site in Lower Lake to do the second of those food giveaways. I think Red Bud Health District has, has some involvement as well in helping with the funding of it. That was a great turnout and, and Councilmember Downey was, was a real worker bee in it, in it when I was observing and cuddling animals. I also did help a little bit out in the other room where she wasn't observing me, but it was a great turnout. They also were giving away food and different articles to, for the dogs, leashes, collars, etc. So it's, it was, it was a great day. I, I think we owe those folks a big, thank you. And Supervisor Sabatia and I have, I think, just an update on our, our efforts to get a fire safe council started here. We've, we've got named several members to what we want to be the initial board for it. We'll be working on on bylaws. Initially, it will be, we won't have a 501(c) initially, but that'll be a future plan. The main thing now is to get it organized. It will cover the area that's roughly covered by the Lake County Fire Protection District. The benefit of the Fire Safe Council is that it can act as an umbrella organization for fire-wise communities within, within this area and identifying folks that, that can lead those. Also, it's got the ability to, to seek grants and grant funding. And in fact, we are trying to do that even in the organization with, in, in concert with RCD and Lake County Fire Safe Council. So we're moving forward with that. That impacts the, the presentation we had earlier. And we'll be a part of that. That's about all that I have to report. So now let's move on to future agenda items. I know that Councilmember Wilson had mentioned one, I think she had also talked with you, I'm not sure, on making us a part of the Continuum of Care Committee and making the city have a. and making the city have a representative in it. She wanted to bring that to, uh, to a, a future agenda item to add it as, and maybe it doesn't require, but we can talk about it. Add it as a, a mayor's, uh, appointment type thing. So I'll mention that. Is there any other? Any of our members have anything? Do you have something?
I do.
Go ahead.
Um, so for a future agenda item, I would like to look into, uh, funding a measure for recreations facilities.
Okay. Any more?
Just make, make sure there's consensus from the council to bring it back. Yeah.
Yes, I, I'll say it.
Yep.
On, uh, how about on the continuum of care? Does that require that too?
It could be handled a few different ways. I think we can, well, talk about it offline and figure out a plan.
Okay, as long as it, uh, gets talked about. Alrighty. So we just needed the voice, we're good there. Okay, so. On, uh, okay, we're at the end. So thank you. Trying to think, oh, I got anything else here. Thank you to everyone who took the time, uh, to submit their comments via Zoom. And to those who are watching our meeting on YouTube here in the council chamber, we'll now adjourn the meeting, the closed session at seven thirty.